Okay, it's 7:01. Good evening. I'd like to call the September 12th meeting of the Georgetown Select Board Order. I would also like to remind my colleagues and members of the audience that this meeting is recorded and will be made available to the public on YouTube. And before we do anything else, I'd like, would you please join me in a moment of silence in honor of Julia Moulton? She was the Boston Post Kane Holder in the town of Georgetown from 2019 until 2023. Is there any public comment? Okay, I don't see any public comment. And are there any items to be added to the agenda? I don't have any. Do you have any items, Rich?
Want to be speaking about taxes and things like that?
Yes.
Okay, I know. Anything to be added to the agenda?
No, no, thanks.
All right, does that take it to you?
All right, and I will take over the agenda here now. We have no scheduled appointments as of now, so the first item of business would be the minutes of the August 29th meeting for review and approval.
Motion approved.
I second. I would note, Tyler, there are a few typos. You might want to read it over before you actually put it on the website.
Will do. Thank you, Bronwyn. I went to Mount Ararat, you know, some days. So it has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Pending the typos.
It's pending spell check.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, can we do it over? As of right now, there was nothing under review. I do want to let folks know that Pat Dow, this has been a recurring theme, is still in town, not as frequently as he had been on pre-commitment pickup work. We're cruising ahead towards the next steps on there. We have a few items of correspondence. The first one in your packet was a Maine Department of Agriculture Conservation and Forestry Notice about the Volunteer Fire Assistance Program. This is a grant that the fire department has utilized before. It's tailored to communities with populations of less than 10,000, and you can get up to $5,000, you know, and so the deadline is in November, so the fire department has time to participate there. I also included some job information from the Department of Labor. They periodically send out updates about hiring events around the state and in the area, and also some relevant local job postings. And so I figure as select members of the Select Board, you may hear from a constituent who might find that information useful.
Tyler, is that posted on the bulletin board at the town office?
It is not, but I think that's actually a good idea, you know, they come out monthly.
I'm not looking for a job, but someone who is might want to know where to find that information.
I'm backing up. Is Pat going to be in the office in this coming week?
I don't know the answer to that.
Do you expect him? I recommend that certainly John Bronwyn, if she wishes, gets a phone call when Pat or Bill are here and say, "Come in here and ask 100 questions about assessing. What he does, what he needs to do, how to get our evaluation to 100%, how much it's going to cost, how long it will take, if it's worth doing. All of those questions that you're dying to ask him about our tax bill. We need to take advantage of him being in the office. I've been asking you guys that for years.
Thank you, Rich.
Steve going back. You're welcome, Bronwyn. Always happy to help.
And the next item of correspondence was the August Newsletter of the Midcoast Council of Governments. These updates are sent out monthly and provide some good resources here in the midcoast. I just wanted to note to the board, if you weren't aware, that all municipalities in Sagittawhat County are signed up as members of MCAG through Sagittawhat County. That's something that our tax dollars in Georgetown go towards on the county assessment side. So sometimes they put out good funding notices that relevant committees might be interested. So I just thought it would be a good bit to share. We also have the Sagittawhat County Sheriff's Department Incident Report for the month of August. I would just point out that the highest reports here in Georgetown, there were three traffic offenses and also three citizens assists. So the good and the bad tie for three. So any questions there? Seeing none, I just wanted to also include the Georgetown Volunteer Fire Department's Monthly Newsletter and the Auxiliaries Newsletter. And so you have that. Last Thursday, Chris Martin from Mackmahon Island delivered a letter from Susan Wise of Sheik's Get Island Company regarding the resolution that's on tonight's agenda. I did share that with everyone on the board on Thursday. And so now, under other correspondence, right now, there is none. Under continuing items, the Georgetown Community Center had their holding tank pumped. There were no new renewals for the main waste discharge license, but we did have an approval for Joseph and Hannah Conley on Keenway. And we had, for the first time that I've been here in Georgetown, one of our PBR NERPA's for Lothrup LLC on Lewis Road. So let me catch up with my packet to the agenda. And we have somebody in the waiting room, so I will, Jen, thank you. So on the Town Administrator Update, I have just a couple of items that I wanted to share before we got into old and new business. I just wanted to let folks know, as everyone's aware here on the island, there's a lot of discussion going on about the upcoming weekend and the weather that it may bring. I just want to let folks know that we are monitoring that, and should things turn eastward, we will be putting out some good notice. I also wanted to let folks know that our FEMA grant for Robin Hood Road is still progressing. We heard today from MEMA that we've reached the next step where we are posting for public comment. It'll for the next 15 days, ideally actually 15 days from tomorrow, once we have a notice printed in the newspaper that folks can submit thoughts on the proposal to FEMA. So ultimately, this is good news that we've reached that step. You know, they're past kicking back the application for crossing Ts and dotting Is. I also wanted to let folks know that Mary and I have signed up to attend the MMA convention next month. And at a previous board meeting, we touched base briefly on the fee schedule ordinance that we've been talking about. I just wanted to inform the board that I've been in communication with members of the Maine Town and City Managers Association to see what other towns do for this, and we've heard from big towns like South Portland and small towns like Wiscasset and about everywhere in between. I just wanted to let folks know that currently in Maine, there are really two options for us to achieve the goal of having a master fee schedule. The first, as we've discussed, is to create first an ordinance that will give the Select Board the authority to set fees and then amend each of our ordinances to have accompanying language. However, something that a lot of the other towns have done, and I just want to give the board some time to think on this, is that you actually do not need an encompassing overarching ordinance giving the Select Board authority if each of those ordinances, when they're amended this year, change the fee and gave the discretion to the Select Board. I will say, most towns that did respond felt that this is a very worthy goal. That way, we're not tied up in a special town meeting to be able to change a shellfish license fee, et cetera, et cetera. I also just wanted to quickly update the board that we did launch our YouTube account after the last board meeting. We now have 12 subscribers who will, anytime we post a video, are going to be notified. But I do think one of the things that I found pretty interesting was that, you know, typically at a Select Board meeting, we have eight to 10, maybe 12 people come out. We've already had over 60 views with accumulated watch time of over 10 hours of the Select Board. So there are folks in town that might not want to watch the full hour of what we discuss, but definitely are zooming in on the parts that are relevant to them. So I think that's a good town service that we're providing. And lastly, I just wanted to remind folks on the board to please use my town email when reaching out regarding town business. There, I feel should be a clear delineation between the personal and public accounts on my end, if possible. It's happened a few times, I think, from every member of the board at least once. So what I do is I forward over any of those items to the town account, so they're archived as public records. But just going forward, if we can move towards that, though, I know I sometimes send things to the wrong email, too. So if I have any questions on what I shared in the administrator's update, I'd be happy to field them.
For me, please outline that and send it to me in a separate email.
Okay.
So we are seeing this before. And we'll talk offline.
Okay, what I typically do is I can send you the manager's update.
If you're going to put out stuff, talks about amending ordinances, car choices, things like that, then please send it in a paper copy.
I can definitely do that. I just want to let you know in terms of the Town Administrator Update that I have on the agenda in this form changes and gets updated right up to probably the hour before. So I can send you my thoughts that I have, but if something comes in, I want to make sure that this update can stay timely. But I can send you a copy, too.
Offline.
Perfect.
There is no offline. It's all public. There is no offline.
I can speak to Tyler anytime. Bronwyn, if I want an email from Tyler, I can talk to him anytime I'd like.
I try to keep my communications with Tyler into the hours that he's supposed to be working, but I appreciate that you can call him anytime outside of a meeting.
Oh, no, I wouldn't.
Definitely.
Wouldn't be outside of his work hours. It just wouldn't be now with this big phone. That's all.
Were there any other questions regarding the contents of the update? And if not, I'd be happy to turn things over to Mary for the Finance Director's update, which everybody should have a paper copy of the financials that Mary will be going over, emailed and in paper copy.
Mary? Good. Thank you. Last week, I had sent you, you folks, out a memo regarding the June 30 financial statements. And it's my intent to give this set of financial statements to the auditors unless you folks see something glaring. I made a bunch of notes on them for you, not a bunch, but I made some notes on them for you of things that I thought were either possibly unclear or they just needed further explanation. But just a couple of items that I will go over with you tonight. I had gone over some stuff with John as far as how to view my notes and then the financial statements. So pretty much at the end of the year, to go over just the other items that I had included in your package. In the end, at the end of the year, we have a little over one, almost $1.5 million tied up in reserve funds from property assessing to the school facilities. Designated funds, which is those items that will be carried forward from fiscal year 2022, '23 to '23, '24 as required either by law or by our auditors, and that currently is a little over $61,000. It does not, as you know, include the school. Sick Vacation Carry Forward came in at $21,000. Shellfish has two grants that we carry forward year after year, one of them being the Holt Grant and the other one, the Maine Community Foundation, had given some money. And then I also had carried forward, the Conservation Commission had received a grant, the Community Resilience Grant for $39,000, none of which we expended last year, so that came over to this year as well. And then there's some, a little bit of broadband money left over. So in total, that's a little over $61,000. So in the financial statement package that you received, I have posted back to last June, almost $178,000 worth of payables, the majority of those being in the roads, and then just little ones from, you know, Fire Department Fuel to Pretty Clarity for Legal Services. But again, those, that, all of that stuff is passed on to the auditors. Included in your financial statements is $14,000 worth of accrued payroll. Again, that would be payroll paid in July that belongs back in June. Those have all been accrued. And then accounts receivable, we have a few things that were outstanding at the end of June. Excuse me, from the state, we had $16,000 outstanding in homestead and veterans exemptions. The Nature and other receivables, the Nature Conservancy had given us some money to help with Flying Point Roads, so I have accrued that, and the interest due to, from the Cemetery Trust Fund. And then we had, under general prepaid, we had given Jordan Will Cox, and as part of the cemetery, the cemetery trustees had asked to give him a payment ahead of time to cover this, you know, fall's mowing. So I had done that, and again, those were reversed. And then the other ones that are on my list of accounts receivable all belong to the school. A balance from June of 2022 for both general prepaid and then due from other funds. So those are all from the school. And then at the end of the year, excuse me, we have $79,000 in outstanding taxes. Those will be going to lean this month, and I do believe that that amount is down to about 20 boats versus the 45 at the end of the year. In 2021 tax liens, we have one property still, and then the 2021 liens, which will go to foreclosure in late February, early March, totals about $14,000. So and then another sheet that I forwarded on to is what we call the repo slash CD and Cemetery Trust information. The Cemetery Trust Fund, as you know, is not on the actual books of the town. It's part of the fund, as of the end of June, that account had a little over $80,000 in it. And again, I've been tracking that account for years. Other than that, we have $2.3 million invested in other banks around the town, I mean, around the town, around the state. So pretty much those are all the supporting documents that I forwarded on to you, as well as the financial statements. I did set up your health insurance reserve, which was part of our warrant, and that reserve fund came in at a little over $14,536. So that has been done. We had, I had done an accrual for some work on the flooring here. So and that's again tied up. The TOPMB had requested funds from you folks to, from their reserve fund to cover some work at the bait building and the roof, I believe, on the lobster building. So we had done that. I think they'd asked you not to exceed $15,000 is what the Slide Board had agreed to. I only had to move, because they had extra money at the end of the year in their budget, the only thing that had to come out of their reserve fund was a little over $5,000, which you see on this reserve fund breakdown, usage was $53.66 for the town on Property Management Board. The school's audit will begin, I believe, shortly after our audit. So I'm expecting to get some numbers there. As you knew, the fire department was very high on the vehicle maintenance. So I just gave you a little breakdown of that, of how that was handled. And then for the most part, the code enforcement officer shows as a net loss, these are all flow-throughs. Any plumbing permits that come in, he gets 75, state gets 25, all building permits, he gets 100%. So these are all washes, not much happening for control. So the only other one of note other than roads is the Solid Waste Committee. I had spoken with Dave Polito. They have some expenditures coming up this year for the roof over the bulky waste and compactor area. So I had, they again had some extra money at the end of the year, so I did accrue $5,500 toward that expenditure. You'll see that the roads, financial statement looks terrible, shows a net loss of $144,000, and that is because the auditors last year required me to take the $149,000 and do it as a carry forward and not as a reduction. So that $144 is certainly covered by the $149,000 in carry forwards. And also, we had budgeted to take some money from the culvert, from the Robin Hood Road culvert repair reserve fund, but since Charlie was not over budget, I left that, left those funds alone. Then for the snow removal one, this is a zero balance, but I just wanted to let everyone know that last year, the $55,000 that's on the statement represents 640, almost 648 ton of salt. And other than that, really, there's not a whole lot. The cemetery markers, markers and sales, all that stuff went through the fund. And I think pretty much that was it. So I feel pretty solid about these. I have no problem. The auditors will be here next Monday. I'm uploading a bunch of these documents to them now so that they can, you know, do their thing. The only other questions I had for the board at this time, or the only other things I had for the board at this time, is that at town meeting, we had approved updates to payroll numbers for the fire department personnel, both in a, it was a pay scale plus a 6% like we did here, as well as steps for those folks that are medics, EMTs, things like that. And I just wanted to know, I wanted to know when those are to be effective. I know that we do the, you know, we did the transfer station the first of the year, you know, the first of the new fiscal year, as well as the Harbor Master CEO, all that. So we're not Harbor Master, Shellfish, Warden. And I just didn't know how this was going to be handled here, the payroll sheets for the fire department. So I just needed your input on that. So other than that, I think that was it.
That's the one that we work on the July thing, and then that's based on, or part of it's based on minimum wage, then that's what takes effects on, how has that usually been?
Historically, it's done at the hourly, the chief, the treasurer, et cetera, July 1st.
Okay.
The responders, even like Brian is a responder, Jane is a responder, would be January 1st. That's how we've historically done it, because typically Bureau of Labor in October will come out with the next year's minimum wage, and then we make adjustments since the least paid member affects the most paid number.
Right, right. So should we just hold off until?
That's how we've historically.
I mean, that seems to me, seems to make sense in that way. How do you feel about it, Bronwyn? Is that, you doing it the way we've been doing it?
It makes sense.
Okay, no, I just.
I, is it, does that mean that the minimum, the minimum wage is what changes in January? Does that, yeah? And is there 6% added to that? Or is the 6% COLA that we approved added to previous wages?
Yeah, no, it's a 6% COLA added to minimum wage.
Because the, the fire department pay scale is based on minimum wage with the steps going up.
Plus steps, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I guess my question is, does that have to be retroactive in some way to July? If our fiscal year is July 1 to June 30, and the budget was approved for that fiscal year? Or do we just? I guess if we've done it in the past and it's been acceptable, I'm happy to stick with that or whatever you recommend. I just raised the question.
I was unaware that we were adding the COLA to the hourly responders. So I guess the question I now have is Joe Smith, on January 1st, minimum wage was up a dollar. So everyone gets a 6% COLA on top of their minimum wage. Joe Smith, on the 3rd of January, says, "I want to join the fire department." Is he getting minimum wage because he was three days behind the COLA? Or is the minimum employee paid minimum wage plus 6%?
I would check with Brian on that, but we've all, we've started all of them at minimum plus 6% as the base rate. And then they get a quarter for off probation, you know, additional for steps. Yeah.
So next year, if the COLA was up another 6%, is it going to be minimum wage plus 12%?
Well, it would be their rate plus 6%. It would be their current rate plus 6%.
Okay, so this is a serious question.
No, I agree.
So I get my head wrapped around that. So we have a minimum wage guy who starts this January 3rd.
Yeah.
He's getting minimum wage plus 6%. Then next year, minimum wage does not go up, but everyone gets a 6% COLA, whatever. So it's a guy that starts next January getting minimum wage plus 12%? Or is he getting minimum wage plus whatever the COLA was that year?
I would say he's getting minimum wage plus definitely COLA, is that?
Okay, I think that's why we didn't give COLAs to our responders in the past. It's just getting crazy with who starts when and how much they are.
Right, yeah, okay, yep. No, we did it, we did it all based on COLA.
This year?
This year, yeah.
Great.
Yeah, well, because I, we did them all based on 6%, so yeah, yeah.
Which doesn't mean, which doesn't mean we have to do it that way next year if we anticipate the issue. Right? I mean, when we discuss COLA next year, we could be more specific, perhaps, about who it applies to and when it kicks in.
Right. Okay, so I'm hearing a January 1 start date for these, for the, for the new rates.
Yes.
Thank you. And I believe that's all I've got.
Were there any other questions for Mary regarding her report? Seeing none, we'll move on to committee updates. In your packet, or not in your packet, but we are in receipt of the Recreation Committee Minutes for August 1st. We also have an appointment on the agenda tonight, and I would turn this over to Bronwyn as the Personnel Liaison to discuss the appointment of Philip Mason as a Planning Board Member Alternate.
Ah, Mr. Mason filled out a volunteer application. I spoke with him on the phone and suggested that he speak with Bob Tribona, who I see as now on the screen visible, Mr. Conat, Conat? I'm not, I'm never sure what that designation refers to. It must be a submarine acronym or something. Anyhow, Phil Mason is a, has lived in Georgetown for a little over a year, I think. He has a background in urban planning and has volunteered his expertise and services to join the Planning Committee, Planning Board, and learn about some of the very specific laws and issues that affect planning boards in Maine. And Bob has recommended his appointment, and I'm very pleased to present him as, to recommend his appointment as an alternate member of the Planning Board.
And I saw.
You want a motion?
Yes.
Ah, I move to appoint Phil Mason to the vacant slot as an alternate to the Planning Board. And if Bob is here, if he'd like to speak to that.
Yes, I spoke with Mr. Mason, and he seems like a very good candidate. I think he has good experience and brings a lot to the table.
Thank you, Bob. And before we go any further, I just let everyone know that Mr. Mason actually is in attendance tonight. If he did want to offer any quick thoughts to the board, if not, I believe there is a motion on the floor.
Second.
And it was seconded by Rich.
I would just say I appreciate your appointment very much. I'm really looking forward to working with the Planning Board, Bob, and the rest of the members of the board. And thanks so much for your appointment.
Thanks for stepping up. Appreciate it.
So now we have to vote for it?
Absolutely.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it is unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Mason. Part of what makes Georgetown great is its wide array of volunteers. So welcome to the team. And with that, I would turn things over to the Liaison Updates. Mr. Con, oh, thank you. Mr. Con- oh, thank you, Mr. Collins.
Good night.
Yeah. Um, recreation, they were planning, they're still hoping it's going to be good weather for the fall frolic. Hopefully the storm misses us. Um, that was the biggest thing on their thing. And Shellfish Committee has been talking with, um, somebody from Maine, uh, or DMR, that's it, yeah. And they went over their, uh, ordinances. And the state has a certain amount of things they wanted them, and in, in the ordinances, they didn't have it. So they've gone through their whole ordinance thing and they're going through a couple more changes. It's going to set, get, we'll get to see it and, um, it's going to have to go, you know, there's a lot of stuff that's changed, a lot of word stuff, um, but it's not huge differences, but just to make it fit the bill, uh, fit what the state wants. And one of the things was, is we mentioned earlier, the, the fee structure, that was one of the things that she suggested, the, the woman from DMR that should be removed from it. That way we don't have to wait and have a special, every time we want to change something, we have to have a special town meeting, you know, take it to the town meeting. That was the one, one of the big things I learned out of that one. So that's all I have.
Donaldson.
Did you committees?
Yes.
Sure.
No.
All right, uh, TOP MB for the Lady of the Netherlands fourteen forty, uh, five on Huns Road has repositioned her gardens to her property. TOP MB sent a letter that, uh, Tyler helped craft, and, um, she acknowledged it. And she met with, I think, Mark Donovan, and the, uh, the gardens are now firmly in on her property. So that's a win. Uh, I have anything from Board of Appeals? And Mr. Mason sat in on the last, uh, planning board, and, uh, he was engaged. He had good questions. So I think he's going to be a good addition to the the planning board as an alternate. I did warn him that I started as an alternate and six months later was the vice chair. And three months after that, I was the chair, and the next cycle I was the selectman. So watch out, he can get sucked into, uh, Georgetown.
Absolutely.
It's dangerous. That's all I have.
And Ms. Tudor, did you have an update?
The Conservation Commission met last night. They have a bunch of programs coming up. Uh, the coastal cleanup and they're hoping, like the rec committee, that the hurricane will avoid Reed State Park. Jim Peavy, just before this meeting, sent out another hurricane memo. So it doesn't sound, it sounds as if we're going to get an impact, but whether it happens before or after the time of the fall frolic remains to be seen. Um, they also have a November potluck coming up at which the theme, there will be a theme of getting ready for winter. And they'll have some, uh, informational presentations, displays about weatherization, which is part of the promotional aspect of the resiliency grant. Um, Solid Waste Committee, since their last meeting, they meet this week also on Thursday. They had a letter from DEP inspector, uh, the DEP inspector citing some minor problems at the hazardous waste building, which they are working on to remediate. I think that's it for committees.
Thank you, Bronwyn. And with that, I would turn this over to board member updates. If any board members had something that was not relating to their liaison or committee update that they wanted to share in regards to town business.
I don't have.
Well, if I could, I, I want to continue that about the resiliency grant. Uh, the subcommittee on that project met by Zoom. Thanks to Tyler's, uh, research skills uh, with a vendor who is actually interested in doing the project. And, um, the committee has reviewed their proposal, and we're prepared to say go forward with it. There, especially because they are eager to start and have promised to complete their report with recommendations for a few further action, uh, soon after the new year. Um, we simply, we do want them to add in, uh, a timeline, incorporate in there a timeline that the, uh, that Jessica Weller has worked out for community engagement in regard, regarding those grants. But they're, they've already expressed willingness to participate in, um, in-person meeting, presentation, and/or a Zoom. And I think we hope to make use of the new YouTube channel to be able to disseminate to a broader audience information about the grant, the process, and hopefully recommendations that will come out of that process, uh, for saving both money and energy.
Thank you, Bronwyn. All right, and now we will be moving on to old business.
No.
Oh, oh.
Thanks, Tyler.
I had looked over there earlier and hadn't seen.
In August, MMA was soliciting nominations for the Ethel N. Kelly Memorial Award. And it's for, um, particularly outstanding community service to your municipality and your surrounding municipalities, um, both in local government and outside the local government. And Ethel Kelly was, uh, one of the founders of MMA. She worked at MMA for forty-five years and held just about every position there, uh, before her death in nineteen eighty-one. And MMA made this award in her name in nineteen eighty-six. And I nominated Mary for this award, and I reached out to, uh, surrounding communities and received wonderful letters from Mary, um, from Woolwich, from a Rousek, uh, from the community center and from members in our community. And unfortunately, Mary did not receive the award this year. Of the eighteen nominees, there were over five hundred years of community service collectively for folks that are giving back to their communities. Um, so there's some pretty stiff competition. Uh, but Mary, everyone that I reached out to had nothing but positive things to say. They love you to pieces, and, uh, you were certainly well deserving of the Ethel Kelly Award.
Thank you.
And that's all I have for my update.
And I think those sentiments are shared by everyone around the table and on Zoom.
I think so.
Thank you.
And now I'm going to ask again, is there any other board updates? Because I don't want to cut anyone off before we get to old business.
No.
Seeing, seeing none, the first item of old business is the Fire Chief's proposal for the purchase of a new squad truck. And I do see Brian on Zoom if he would like to speak to this.
Uh, yeah, thanks, Tyler. Um, so you guys got the information I gave you guys last week in the, in your packet there. Um, as to, uh, the couple of things we've looked into for this new squad truck and, uh, just hoping to get your approval to go ahead and start moving forward with that. Uh, get the authorization to go out and purchase. Um, I, uh, included a couple of different quotes in there, uh, different vehicles. They're not exactly the same, um, but based on what's available and, uh, makes models, different things like that. So with, uh, it's not quite apples to apples exactly, but it's pretty close. Um, I do have a, uh, a preferred one in there, but, um, you know, we can go from there. Um, you know, if I had to make my pick out of those couple that I gave you, it'd be the, uh, going with the Ford truck. Um, for the number one reason, it's got the, uh, biggest cab, biggest, uh, cab out of all the models there, and that's kind of one of the primary reasons that, uh, we need to upgrade this truck to start carrying people in it. Um, it's got the biggest back, backseat out of all of them, uh, which again is, uh, you know, a huge advantage for us. And, uh, so anyway, you get the information there. Do you guys have any, uh, questions for me regarding that?
I see Bronwyn's hand is up right now.
I have a motion. I'd like to move to authorize purchase of the, of a new GVFD squad truck as presented in Chief Wayland's memo to the board dated August ninth and approved by the finance director. And, um, I would like to ask that the memo of August ninth from the chief and the finance director's memo of August thirty-first be appended to the minutes of this meeting. But the motion is to approve, the purchase as presented to the board in the memo dated August ninth as previously approved by the finance director and funded by a vote at town meeting.
I'll second that motion. A discussion.
Okay, um, Brian, so you're aware, uh, you didn't follow the town procedures when you did this. And the process is important. That we're getting a squad truck kind of less important. Um, the only way that any committee in the fire department in Georgetown is treated like a committee um, can use reserve funds is to first go to the select board. It's the same with the school committee. They did it a couple of weeks ago. They had a special meeting before a select board meeting because they wanted to use reserve funds. And in your memo, you say that you started this research in May. We hadn't had town meeting vote. You weren't authorized to do that.
I was not authorized to research ahead of time.
You put out proposals.
Okay.
It's, it's a town fire truck. The fire truck.
I'd like to call the question.
Yeah, hold on, can I, can I answer that, Rich?
I'd like to call the question.
What, what question, Bronwyn?
The, the motion is on the floor.
And we're discussing.
The question, I'm calling the question.
What does that mean?
It means that if anyone, that means that it, it's a motion that supersedes the motion on the floor. It has to be voted on, and if it's voted, if it's approved, then we vote on the motion and move on.
We're on the discussion.
Then we go on to discussion. No, I'm sorry, Rich, but read Roberts' rules.
We're still in discussion.
No, read Roberts' rules. That's what, that's what calling the question is for. It's to end fruitless discussion.
And I think we should probably table this until the next board meeting so we can do research.
No, no. That is ridiculous.
So to, to offer a parliamentary, by way of background, I used to teach parliamentary procedure to two hundred high school juniors every year at Boy State. Just sharing that as background so folks understand the depth and knowledge of parliamentary procedure. If somebody moves to call the question, there would be a second to that motion. And then there would be a vote on whether or not to end debate and proceed to that motion. So I've. So I.
Go ahead.
So I believe there was a request to call the question. I did not hear a second at this point. If there isn't a second, then it would proceed to continue along the lines of discussion.
I'm going to second. I just don't have the discussion. Okay. Get it done with.
Super. So anyway, Brian, the, there's processes in town. And you didn't follow the process. And as I was stating before.
I'd like to, actually, Rich, Rich, I'd really like to know exactly what process you're talking about. Um, there's no, there's been no process that's been given to me in writing or to the exact process that I need to follow for something like this. I have asked your board, I've asked the Assistant Select Board at the time for all the town administrative policies and procedures and a lot of those, but I need to know what they are. And you say that I've not followed this process, but there, this process has never been articulated to me. Continue.
That's been, that's been an issue. That's, that has been a big issue when this whole thing, the whole time. That's why I really want to get the workshop so everybody has these things. This, it's, this is as frustrating for you as it is for me having to be here and deal with this.
Absolutely.
We've gone over it. It seems every time there needs to be, there's, you want, and I don't mean to be, you seem to want more information and more stuff each time. You have been very, very patient and very forthcoming in giving us this stuff. If you, if it wasn't laid out ahead of time, what you needed to do, that is, that would be a fault in this office for not having the information and not giving it to you. Uh, you know, and if you didn't know to ask, that's whatever. I'm not here to throw blame either way. That's what we the workshop, we've been hoping to pla- plan and have to get done. That, that's what that workshop is going to be for. Beyond that, you have given us stuff and I am, I myself am content with what you, what you've given us. If the dates, if the dates aren't right, well, we didn't, we didn't know that. We didn't let you know. Now we do know. So that's moving forward. That's what we need to make sure we get clear. The, the communications needs to be better. If there is something obviously big or something like that, we know that we need to, we know we need to talk back and forth. When you think you're ready for one, let us know, and then we can deal with it. But at this point, if, do we, did, uh, Bronwyn just leave or is she still here? She's still here?
She's still there.
Okay, with, with that being said, in the discussion, do you still want to carry on? I mean, I'm not carrying. Do you have any more? Do you have any more to add to the discussion?
I'm, I'm okay.
Okay, so I, I understand that it didn't go how maybe it should have or how we have, how it.
It didn't go like any other committee would have done it.
Then we, then we're going to work on it and we'll figure it out and we'll make it work next time. Is that fair?
Sure.
That being said, if there's, is there any more discussion at that, at this point? So at this point, we can vote on it, okay?
And so?
I'm for it.
In favor?
And then I ask if there are any opposed?
Any opposed?
One.
Which carries two to one. The next item on the agenda is a resolution regarding Macmahan Island, which was in your packet. The, at a previous board meeting, the board had directed me to craft a resolution towards the, the goal of working with the legislature to repeal the special and private law that requires the return of twenty percent of the property, property taxes collected from Macmahan Island to Macmahan Island. There is a final copy of the resolution ready to be signed. Should it be approved tonight by the board?
We should approve.
Second.
Seconded by Bronwyn. Is there any discussion?
Well, I would just note that, uh, in addition to the letter that we received, uh, from Susan Wise as president of the, uh, Macmahan Association, whatever it's called, um, I received a phone call from a constituent, um, resident of Georgetown who expressed concern for family, friends, and, um, others on the island that this appeared to be, um, unexpected from their side and, um, abrupt and could cause financial issues for them, uh, which I understand. Um, and I also understand that what we're doing is approving the, uh, submission of a bill, um, which can be amended, refined, adjusted. It could contain, um, an element of staging in. Um, and the residents of Macmahan are certainly free to talk to members of the legislature, especially the representative from Georgetown, Allison Hepler, um, who's putting the resolution, resolution in. The timing, uh, is important, um, just because where we are in the legislative calendar.
Any further discussion?
No, no, no.
I don't know, I'm.
So the, what I would say is after the resolution is passed by the board, if it, if it is passed by the board in a moment, the next step is that the bill would be submitted before legislative council. The, the legislature then decides whether or not the bill meets the threshold of being an emergency. If it was an emergency, the bill would, if approved by ledge council, then be submitted to be considered in the session starting in January. So there is plenty of process ahead of time. The resolution is a statement of opinion by this board directed to their state legislators on that issue. So I just wanted to sum up that process a little bit because I apparently talked too much.
So.
And I believe there was a motion at a second.
So.
I'm in favor.
And I'm in favor.
Yeah.
And it is unanimous. All right. And that concludes our old business, and now we'll move into new business.
Hold on, before you start that.
Yep.
There's gonna, I guess now we three additions to new business. So, okay. Flow with it. It'll be the end.
Okay, okay. So the first item. So the first item was a memo from me as the Town Administrator to the Board regarding Agenda Item submissions. We had talked at the last meeting about that process and I was directed by the board to come forward with a proposal. I broke up this into two parts, sending out of the agenda as well as getting submissions from the board, town staff and community members to the agenda. Real highlights, select board members, I'd ask that there is a deadline set of two P M on the Thursday before any regularly scheduled board meeting for the submission of an agenda item. And these agenda items should include any relevant background information to inform that. And recognizing that there are times things come up that, you know, won't be in on that Thursday, but we should all strive towards the no surprises with each other and give folks a weekend to do homework. I follow that same set of guidelines for town staff of a two P M the Thursday before any regular scheduled select board meeting. And again, that should include all of the relevant documents that would be needed for consideration by the board. So they have time to review that. I recommended that for community members, that the select boards had a deadline of noon time, the Wednesday before any regularly scheduled select board meeting. For the community members to request an addition to the addition to the agenda. I pushed this a day before because sometimes if a proposal is coming from the community, it may require a little bit more background and thought to see what would need to be gathered. And so that's where I'm coming on submissions. Ideally, I would be meeting with the Chair of the Board the Thursday before any regularly scheduled meeting of the select board to go over a draft agenda and any of those items submitted. And after that meeting is completed and there is consensus, we would send out the draft agenda as well as a packet of the items. So again, members of the board have time to do homework over the weekend. So that's where I am on the memorandum. I recommend that the board set these deadlines. Or at least try to adhere to them. And I do think that this item was where I was also hoping to see if the board was looking to have a workshop to discuss some of these workflow processes here and how they've been run in Georgetown and solicit, you know, feedback on potential times folks would be interested in a workshop.
Tyler, if I may, or John, if I may. Are you done?
Yes.
Okay. We should probably have two workshops. One should be with you and the select. Then we can iron out expectations for our committees as well as expectations for here, just bank deadlines and things for submission. Sure. There are greater things that we need to get out as a select board to people. So they all understand. So that needs to happen first. Then you can compile our way ahead. And you can have a workshop for committee chairs, transfer station suit, and fire chief, harbor master, A C O, et cetera. Have them gather and then put out marching orders from how the paperwork will flow within the town office.
We did, in fact, have have that kind of a workshop last year and Amanda created a workbook which all of the committee chairs received. So Tyler, I'm sure you'll want to check into that. Since there must have been some useful information given there, if not everything that seems to be important. I I would like to say that I think your deadlines are quite generous. Considering that the staff does not work on Friday, the office is not open. And therefore, two P M on Thursday is almost the close of day for you to process any new information that's coming in from board members or and certainly it's it's reasonable to expect that if members of the public have items they want on the agenda. It's not always the board may not always consider it appropriate to put all of those items on the agenda. Just because somebody asked, especially if an agenda is already quite full. I know Amanda frequently told people it would be at least the next meeting before that topic might be addressed. So in terms of your memo, I certainly think it's reasonable to expect us, since we meet every two weeks, more or less, to live with a two P M deadline on Thursday. As appropriate for setting an agenda.
Thank you, Bronwyn. And I will be tracking down that workbook. And so in terms of potential workshop, is there consensus, I believe, John? You as a new board chair could probably benefit from re-going through that discussion as I
I don't even remember that. I mean, I vaguely remember the thing, but I don't remember seeing the actual document as such. I I just, I don't.
You need to add reserve fund usage to that packet since all of our department heads and chairs got it. I don't recall seeing it either time. I probably did. So I count these things in the office.
So find that and then figure out when do we want to try to do that. Do a workshop on that.
Sooner is better than later, so he can get the info.
Given previous, given some previous disputes disagreements about policy within this board. I think that we should review any policies that have to do with financial processes. To be sure that we all agree on what the what they actually mean. In terms of doing something or filing something or getting approval from someone. Because the policy we have, there has been more than one meeting where we were in total disagreement about what the policy, what the words of the policy meant in terms of what someone was required to do. So let's sort that out and not go through this week by week.
Would it would it be amenable to the board to potentially have me reach out tomorrow and Thursday to figure out what dates work for overlap on setting a workshop for that kind of discussion?
Sure.
And by Thursday, we'll have a date set. So that that works. Was there any consensus from the board on whether or not to approve the recommendations on deadlines? Or do we want to go just kind of on the honor system for now until after that workshop that we're striving for Thursdays?
There, as far as I'm concerned, deadlines.
Perfect.
But this workshop needs to happen, so we're all on the same page.
Agreed. So would we be looking at like the next next week or is that is that, I mean, I don't know. You got a planning board next week? Is that going to be like the Tuesday that went back? Would that be?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. What's on what's on Tuesday?
And that planning board next week, I believe, is that the one that was canceled? I think so. So we would potentially have next.
That's correct.
Yeah. So I mean, that plant, that Wednesday is canceled if folks wanted to.
I can, I don't have anything. I don't have anything going, obviously.
Talking this one, the twentieth?
The twentieth.
Yeah, that's okay.
And is there a time of day that works best?
John works till four, right?
I work till four. I mean, if it could be five, that gives me a chance to at least get home and is that is that okay? Is five okay?
So.
Would five work for you? That work for you, Bronwyn?
Yes, sure.
Okay. Good.
All right. So not to the Thursday, we'll set that for five P M.
Thank Wednesday, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Wednesday, the twentieth. All right.
Tyler, you may, if I may add, you may want to provide an outline for things that you wish to discuss. That packet's on it, and please get it to us soon. If that's going to be a discussion item. So if we have any comments or questions, we can highlight.
We can, we can work on it.
And then you can have an outline of anything else that you would like to discuss, like your timeline.
Participants in this workshop, since there's a lot of financial stuff, should include the Finance Director.
Are you, is that going to work for you or?
Okay.
Well, you're just getting off at five.
Oh shit, that's right.
So is eight.
He gets paid overtime.
So do I, I guess. All right, fine. And we'll work on putting together an outline so folks can be thinking ahead. So the next item of business is the Maine Municipal Association's annual business meeting at the convention that is upcoming. And the town of Georgetown, if we wish to vote on the bylaws of the Maine Municipal Association, needs to designate a delegate to that convention.
And an alternate, right?
And an alternate.
And so far, I mean, Rich and you and Mary are planning to attend, is that correct?
Yes.
Do I have to nominate Rich as the primary delegate? This is the delegate. Do we need so do we need to, do we have to have an alternate? Or is it just?
Hey, you might as well. You never know. Rich could slip on a banana peel.
Or have appendicitis.
You guys have to go out even, rough paper scissors to see which one he was the alternate.
Up to the board. All right.
Nominate Tyler as the alternate.
Okay, so it's a double whammy motion, right? To nominate Rich as the delegate and Tyler as the alternate, and I'm happy to second.
All right.
I'm in favor. Our discussion, we discussed it. All in favor?
And that is unanimous, three to zero. All right. And we will have some forms related to that appointment that'll need to be signed after the meeting. Along with the resolution and the appointment of Philip Mason to the planning board. The next item on the agenda was one that had come in as a request last week, a discussion on the implementation of a policy to manage short term rentals in reaction to L D seventeen oh. I talked with Rich a little bit about, I believe, his thoughts on where we were headed with this. And I believe the the top question, at least to me, that came from that discussion was should we begin the drafting of a possible ordinance at the select board level? Or is there a relevant committee of jurisdiction in town that would take that ball and run with it? And additionally, in thinking of that, what kind of information would we be looking for either internally or from residents prior to the drafting? And open that up for discussion.
It's an issue that the Solid Waste Committee has discussed from time to time with with it reference to increased uninformed usage of the transfer station. And in a conversation at the office yesterday, Mary suggested that we pull together some stakeholders within the community before proposing any legislation, since there's a lot of fear and trepidation among longtime property owners who've traditionally rented their seasonal homes for part of the summer and occupied them at other times. I think also I've become aware inadvertently of some regulations elsewhere that range in in their well, in the there there are a wide range of types of limitation that different communities are trying to set. I'm not sure what we want to accomplish. So I'm hesitant to say to the select select Planning Board, go write us an ordinance. It seems to me we should try to get a little more information about what communities around us are doing. I know Tyler had a phone call this week from someone in Freeport who wanted to know if we had an ordinance. And because he was interested in purchasing any property at all in Georgetown, that he could turn into rentals. That is not the type of usage of this prerogative that I'd like to see. And I doubt that other more traditional renters are anxious for that to happen either. So I think there's a strong need for an ordinance, but I'm not sure what it should address exactly. That's my opening comment.
Rich, you would have brought it up or wanted on here, right?
As that's why I wanted a discussion, Bronwyn. We don't have to make any decisions. And we have to find out what the questions are before we can get an answer for them. Multifaceted. Do we want to register people that have rental homes? Do we want to? What questions do we have for those renters? There there are a lot of folks that are renting eight bedroom homes that are two bedroom homes with a two bedroom attic right on the water. And you go to Airbnb and they're or for rent by owner or whatever it is, and it's it's an eight bedroom place. They're not. Do we want to?
Well, usually it says two bedrooms will sleep ten or something like that. I mean.
Sure. And once again, we we have the authority to register rental homes. If that's something we want to do. There are certainly second and third order effects of rental homes, the Solid Waste Committee being one. L D seventeen oh three or the law seventeen oh three. I mean, really, I can put four houses on my piece of property and I could rent them all. And unless we do something to try to get our arms around this, that's going to happen. And it it's we need to be proactive because it's September and March will be the deadline for our ordinances to get them to the town attorney so we can get them to town meeting. So this is something that there's going to be an influx of rental houses as Tyler's fielded. A Rousek has pretty stringent policies on rentals and on short term rentals. And we can, we can have the authority. If we register all of the current rentals, then we can say that a new rental has to be a minimum of ninety days. We have that authority, especially in line with affordable housing portion of this. And I'm not saying I'm in favor of any one of these or all of these, but these are the questions collectively our select board should be talking about. Now, having stakeholders, that's that's fine. The problem with having meetings is by the time they meet and get info to the select board and we give info back to the committee, it's going to be March before they have their third or fourth meeting.
I didn't suggest, I did not suggest that we create a committee. I I think a meeting of stakeholders is a courtesy to invite them that to tell them that we are discussing the possibility of an ordinance, that it might address this or that or the other thing. And hear what they have to say about that and their information from the renters or the landlord's point of view. We had an interesting couple of interactions with rent with landlords at the select board, the Solid Waste Committee meeting. Where it was on the agenda that we were going to discuss short term rentals and the impact on the transfer station. And one of those people subsequently sent a memo which I've shared with Tyler with specific information about the financial arrangements that they experience. Because we make easily can make assumptions about the money that's involved and whether it's a big business or a small business or I think this also relates to the question of personal property tax being collected on businesses. Because somebody who owns three or four rental properties and simply rents them out by the day or the week or the month, that's clearly a business. We're supposed to be collecting business tax on personal property. And various businesses in town that meet their statutory obligation by voluntarily filing reports. So another possibility is to set up a classification for, for rentals that would determine that certain types of rentals are a business. Uh, I certainly, I think that Amanda was trying to get a handle on this before she left. I think there's some kind of a folder which hopefully she left for Tyler. I think the questions that we need to answer, and maybe it would be helpful before the next discussion, if we were to share those among ourselves. And certainly one question would be, what is the Arousic statute? What is the Arousic ordinance? What is the ordinance in Woolwich? Is there one? Surrounding communities of Pittsburgh may be another similar community to ours. But the idea of a stakeholders meeting was more to allow people who will be directly affected by the ordinance to have a place to comment. Obviously, they can do that at the time that there's an ordinance hearing, but that's pretty far down the road and people tend to get their backs up well before that. So that, that's all. I didn't mean, didn't mean to create a committee.
In, in terms of a Georgetown question though, and this is something we can talk about a little bit more next week, potentially at the workshop as well, does the town ever designate, the select board create an ad hoc committee for the purposes of working on an ordinance? Because I'm thinking we have solid waste components, we have select board thoughts, opinions, at least in the early stages, there were planning board components.
Conservation.
Conservation commission, et cetera. Would it make sense at a future board meeting, probably the next one, to potentially set up an ad hoc committee that can start the work on, you know, whether it's a community night that we have a forum with folks to be able to come out, offer their thoughts? I'm just wondering what Georgetown's past practice has been on ad hoc committees versus.
We've had ad hoc committees.
We have the Duke Committee. The Duke Committee.
Right, right, right.
But we need to first figure out what we want them. The, the next meeting, we're not going to be ready to establish, I don't think, we're not going to be ready to establish an ad hoc committee in two weeks. Because we still have to figure out what do we want to do? So I would think the first thing we have to do is identify every short-term rental on the island at the moment. Then we know what we're dealing with. Are there a hundred of them or there are three hundred of them? We need data. And then, once we have the data, we can see that can we afford to have six hundred or seven hundred of them? That's when we'll, we'll drive a decision on the situation we find ourselves in.
So how do we collect that data, Rich? How do we find out how many rentals there are? Are we, are we going to count the houses we can find on VRBO and Airbnb and the Cottage Connection? Are we going to talk to the state to ask if they will give us at least the numbers of people who file lodging and sales tax?
That is certainly, I mean, it's going to be a challenge and a lot of it's going to have to be on the honor system that people will have to give the info out. Would be a mass mailer? I have no idea. But the people have to understand that if they don't register and we make a rule that affects rentals starting one July or whatever this magical date is, that they're going to have ramifications. So I, I don't know what really the first step, all of the above. But I think we need to get our hands around how many rentals we have. I know some people that rent during the summer and then live in their house in the winter. So yeah, I, I don't know how we're going to get our hands wrapped around that, Bronwyn. Don't know. It's a good question to ask. And I'm sure Maine Municipal has something and the other town administrators, Tyler, in your network and public health.
Yes, and I, I have connected with Denise Parker and Arousec to talk about what they did. I think just at a thirty thousand foot view and then, you know, I've got marching orders, gather data from all sources. I think Arousec is on the more stringent side. It may be good to see if we can find a town that encourages short-term rentals and see what the other side of that coin is and see if there's a sweet spot in the middle that works for Georgetown or at least knows what options are. So I can work on gathering that data. I did not Thursday afternoon have time to get that data ahead of this meeting. So is there anything else that we want to discuss on short-term rentals right now?
And I have a call out to Kristen regarding examples.
Okay.
But she has not gotten back in time for the meeting. I called her last week, left a message, called her again yesterday and then once again today. So hopefully she'll be able to email you with examples of short-term rental ordinances.
Okay. Thank you, Rich. So are we good on that agenda item, folks? Seeing no further discussion, we'll move on to the X item, item of new business.
All right, if I may. The tax policy.
Yes.
All right, the, um, right now, of course, we all know we're about seventy-four percent, seventy-five percent on our valuation. So we have to do something to mitigate that. I know Tyler reached out to Pat and to Bill and got an answer. I'm going to ask you, Tyler, to go into property cards, because we're officially, they have not been gathering data. As a standby generator or a solar is installed, it's put on a property card. So where the answer is, they don't have the data. Well, they do have a lot of the data. That's why I hoped you'd reached out to Amanda. She could have given you a really in-depth answer of how Georgetown's working. But when I called you last week and said, hey, please reach out.
And I'd hope too, on that Friday, we had family things that came up.
It, it's fine. It's, it's good. But I'm just saying that we have a lot of data. We don't tax solar. When we first started talking about it, it was unique. There weren't a lot of incentives. If people had solar, we said, we're not going to tax it. We'll just ignore it. Same thing with standby generators. Well, now standby generators are common. We're not going to overcome a twenty-six point deficit in our valuation by taxing solar and standby generators. But here's something interesting with solar is if homeowners fill out a form and submit it to the state, then we will not tax, their tax bill will not change. But the state will reimburse the town for fifty percent of that valuation. So if a homeowner, six or seven people, from what I understand, have already filled out that form and submitted it to the state. If everyone that has solar were filling out a form, their taxes would not change. But we would get more money from the state of Maine every year. So it's kind of a no-brainer that we would want to go down the path of valuing solar. Since we're now required to put a building permit in for solar, there is a record of all recent solar. And as I said to Tyler a minute ago, if you look at property cards, I'm fairly certain you will find notes from Bill as he's driven around the island and he's seen solar, he comes back and he annotates it. So it's going to be a labor-intensive deal, but Bill also might have it in his computer. So he may be. I'm surprised to hear that. Once again, Bill may be able to catch you on how to find it in our property cards. And his memory is remarkable for an older guy. So anyway, go ahead, Bronwyn.
Well, my question is about this form and solar and the, and the state reimbursement. How far back does that go? And if someone installed solar well before, you know, five years before this current rebate was offered and they let us know that they had solar, we would increase their valuation. Would the town suddenly, would the state suddenly come up with fifty percent of that tax amount saying, or would they say, no, you did this before we offered the deal?
My understanding of the program is it's retroactive and it's forever. You fill out the form one time and while the solar system is in place on your home, you will always get that tax credit. Your tax bill will not go up, but the state annually will send a check to the town of Georgetown because for fifty percent of the valuation.
Of the solar, fifty percent of the valuation of the solar, right?
Yes. It's only the, the, the solar on the, the valuation. And it's, it's not going to be a huge amount of money.
And it's solar, it's solar and wind. So if somebody had a wind turbine and it's renewable power, so I'd be interested to see if geothermal or other renewable energy sources applied. And I just to interject, the town has five of those applications or forms that have been submitted.
Yeah.
And Bill, in writing, you all had his response, but he doesn't see any problem valuing solar or wind if we've received that application. He is hesitant, however, because previous select board, long before Rich or John or Bronwyn were on the board and previous administration had directed them not to collect data on those items. And so he does express some concern about if we don't capture everything, it does create a little bit of an inequity. And the second portion aside of just solar, I think building permits, et cetera, we can get a good lead. We'd asked to talk about the emergency generators as well, and he did express some reservation there outside of a revale because he doesn't think we'd be able to capture all of them. And I just wanted to put that out because that fit on that agenda item and didn't want to get lost by the wayside.
Right, got it. But that's where I'm supporting the solar that we know about, and it's not an equity because the state is giving us the catch. We're not taxing them on solar. So if we missed some, there isn't going to be a burden on a homeowner that John has solar and did not fill out the form. And Bill, we don't even know he has solar and it's on his house. Their tax bills won't change. With the person who filled out that form and we should really press our citizens, hey, you have solar, please fill out this form so the state will reimburse this, the town. That's something we can do.
Absolutely, something we can explore.
But on equity, it, it's not, there isn't an impact. Standby generators, impact minimal, but if we missed one, then someone will be getting over on the system. With solar, the state is paying us.
When do we expect, when do we expect that we'll have to do a total revale? And if it was twenty years ago that, that it was done?
That was one of my, was an add to the agenda next, until I can answer that, John.
Sure.
Bronwyn and Mary's going to film, but back me up on this. Up to three years ago, we were at a hundred percent with our valuations. And we were spot on. And if we had a reeval, even though it was twenty years old, we couldn't have done any better. We're in a position now with property values going up so quickly that if we had a reeval starting April first, then by the time we got the paperwork done, it would already be outdated and we may be still at seventy-four percent. Because home prices are going through the roof and there's no way to capture it. And Brunswick is living this dream right now. They recently had a reevaluation. People are losing it because their properties are worth so much more. And by default, they're having a, a bigger tax bill. So until these, this bubble bursts or until we can get a handle on when these prices are going to go up as quickly as they are, I think the town's only logical position is to keep watching our valuation drop. But we can mitigate that if we have an across-the-board valuation adjustment. And Bill can do that with a couple of keystrokes. Then he'd be, without going house to house and looking the nuance of every home, he can adjust with the magic of his system, he can readjust valuation across the board in Georgetown. It won't be a hundred percent, but it's cheap, it's quick, and it may be a bridge until we can have a full revale.
Sort of like COLA.
Kind of.
A cost of real estate update.
Right. Mary, do you have any input, anything I missed or?
No, um, you know, no, Rich is right. The town has always been able to, the, as you know, the state, the state allows us a percentage plus or minus that we, that we can say it is. And we've always been able to say that we're at a hundred percent. Meaning that, you know, our veterans are getting a hundred percent of that exemption and, and we're getting a hundred percent of the home debt. And when we talked to Bill, you know, a few years ago now, there, you know, he looked at the derivative that the state of Maine had for us and, and he said, if I did a revale right now, I couldn't get a better derivative than this is. So, you know, we were right on the money until COVID. So, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's a crazy ride at this point.
One, one thing I'd throw in too, just for background of the board, the data that Maine Revenue Services uses to compare to our sales data is a year and a half to two years behind, meaning that we are likely to see outside of the factoring that Rich and Mary have talked about a slide again next year before things start to turn around. I think that if you follow Brunswick, they didn't get to fifty-six percent overnight. There's that lag time on the slide. So just for some background there, based on what they're utilizing. And also just for what it's worth in the area here in Saginaw County and talking with other administrators in the region, in the county, there is a real dearth on assessors right now. And revales are getting booked out years in advance at this point with some of the firms. So until we know when the market's going to cool and not be hot, you know, you're going to run into that situation. However, the town may be wanting to think about, do we want to get into the queue at some point? Because there is going to be a significant queue and as folks age out and retire from that field and it is getting worse, there are going to be less assessors around. So that's just good background to have on the state of the situation, but there are factors that can be brought in to help mitigate some of this. And Mary and I have talked with Pat Dow and we're intending to get the board to have a discussion with Bill Van Tynen. Once we get to a point where pre-commitment work and other things are kind of jiving and he's going to be in this neck of the woods. So there are thoughts ahead.
How much of a Band-Aid, what is that, the, the magic keystroke?
Valuation adjustment?
How does that, I mean, how much of a Band-Aid is that? Does, does that buy us time, I mean, time or?
If he did that and we had a full townwide revaluation in two thousand and three.
Right.
And then we had the two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight paper, what he called.
Okay, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
But, but, but at that, he was still, that was still really close af- after the fact. I mean, if that one, and we didn't have the, what we're going through right now with the crazy prices on everything.
Right. And Bill could, you know, Bill has the knowledge base to take a look at our declarations that we're getting, you know, based on a spreadsheet that Tyler and I would do up for him that says, you know, as soon as he's went for three hundred and thou- three hundred thousand, we had it valued at one seventy-five. You know, he's, he's got the knowledge base to look at a spreadsheet like that and say, okay, I need to do this.
Yes.
So that's his, you know.
But this is something we need to, we need to think about at some point here.
Well, I have two questions for you, Tom and Mary. One, do we need a motion to have anything done? I would like to have him look at having a, I would make a motion to have evaluation adjustment done. But do we need a motion now or is it after you compile the data for him?
I would say it's after we compile the data. And, and I think that, you know, it would be of the, the board to sit down with Mr. Van Tynen.
Absolutely.
So it may be that, that it's an afternoon meeting, so he's not driving at night or something. Um, but when he's, you know, when we're closer to that, you know, have him come down and have, have a conversation about all of it.
Yes.
You know, about how difficult it would be to, to, to gather all the solars, how difficult it would, you know, whatever, whatever the case may be. You know, your list of questions.
And then can we put out an info paper? I don't care email, however, people that have solar, fill out that darned form and get it into the state. Just acknowledging they have it. It doesn't cost them anything but a fifty-five cent stamp.
Right, maybe we could get that in our tide item. You know?
If you have solar, fill out a form. And we could probably put a link on our homepage, on our town office page to that.
I'm sure you could get the listserv people, Allison. I'm sure you could get the listserv people, Allison, Jim Peavy, to send out a message of that type with a link to whatever they're supposed to, wherever they would go to fill out this form.
And we also are going to potentially be working with the Register of Deeds of putting in a pamphlet on fraud and tax bills that go out. Depending on what that would do to the cost of postage, we could potentially have a copy of the form mailed out to folks to capture these kinds of things that frankly, there, there is a sizable population. Georgetown's the exception, but it's not the rule that don't have access to that internet. Other things that will get that piece in the mail that very well could have solar and we want to reach them too.
If people have solar, they're probably computer savvy. But whatever you need to do, just eat this elephant.
Yep.
It's probably timely because there's also at least one company that is aggressively contacting homeowners in Georgetown to suggest that they get solar and offering a deal where it won't cost you anything. You'll, you won't have an energy bill. You won't have, it's complicated. We sat through the presentation and decided to get our, our engineering estimate elsewhere. But it's an indication that the various rebates and incentives for installing alternative energy is prompting certain companies to go out and recruit clients. Therefore, there may be an increase in the people in Georgetown who are putting solar on the roof or in the backyard. And I, I think we should at least start trying to collect information about emergency generators because obviously it adds a lot to the value of your property. We lost power yesterday for two or three hours in the morning. Yeah, or maybe it was Sunday. No idea why, but the generator came on and we had to keep checking outside to make sure that it was still on and we didn't have CMP back.
Oh, it's a great thing about the automatic ones. You just need to go out either when there's an outage or, you know, you don't want an outage or when they do their automatic starts. You can go all around town and it's like all of a sudden you just like. There's a lot of them. There's a lot of them.
Good point, Jonathan, because they make a lot of noise.
So we have, are we, I think there's consensus on some direction on data and more information, creating a sheet that folks can utilize, a link, the tide, all kinds of moving forward to try and get folks there. I think there's consensus on that.
Yeah, yes. Bill to talk with us when he has a moment.
Yep. So the last item of new business that I had, the state of Maine put out a state and local cybersecurity grant program consent form. The state, that program is looking to reach out to municipalities and solicit what kind of cybersecurity things towns could use grant funding for down the road. Because they were asking for an authorized signature, I wanted to put it forward to the board to at least have us solicit that, hey, we're interested in cybersecurity, et cetera, and future information about the grant. It doesn't commit us to anything. It doesn't commit us to participate in the program. But I do think letting them know that there is a small island town at the end of a peninsula that would love to potentially migrate to a .gov website with the accompanying emails that aren't Gmail, Hotmail, et cetera. If that creates good cybersecurity and the state's willing to help pay, I'd like to get that out. So I was looking for some approval from you guys to at least put it in. Is there a second?
Second?
Any discussion?
Everybody in favor? We're all in favor.
Three to zero. And with that?
No, I have one more. Now I got an alibi. All right. Now with the passing of our Boston Post cane holder. Do we know who the next oldest Georgetown resident is?
We, we have compiled a list. We're just looking at other sources to make sure we haven't missed someone. Because sometimes somebody is not a registered voter or a property owner that lives in Tampa.
Absolutely. And how are we going to notify them?
Well, once we've determined the person, I believe we would then connect with them and see if there is an interest in being recipients of the cane. And after that point, there would be a presentation from the select board following the Boston Post cane. Am I missing the question, Rich?
No, that's what I'm asking is we have a Post cane holder. They passed. We have, we didn't discuss it. I thought it would be the first thing after we had the moment of silence for the previous that we are identified who the next one is and will be a phone call, will be a letter or an email.
I remember at least one person who refused.
Me too. And so I just want to make sure that we're thinking about it. It's not falling through the cracks and we don't startle whoever it is with, hey, you're the oldest person in Georgetown. They may not want to know.
How old was Julie Moulton?
Wasn't she 1925 or? I think she was just shy of her 99th birthday or something, I think. That's what her obit said.
And her obituary, the most moving to have, somebody of her generation, double major and graduate college at 18. I wish I could have met Julia Moulton, truthfully. That's just awesome.
So anyway.
But we are working on that.
That's good to know. And just don't want to startle the poor folks.
Well, so anybody over 90 should be expecting a phone call. Anticipating, I don't know.
Yeah, that was my last new business.
All right. And I would turn this meeting back over to you, John, for public comment.
You say, oh, I have a signature. We can have that. When's that going to be ready?
We've got them ready. I have certificates and municipal, Maine Municipal and resolutions to be signed. So.
Cool. So, okay, I was just making sure we didn't, is there any public comment? Yes, there is. Aria? Oh, that's the first one I saw. Sorry. Aria first, I guess.
Thank you. Yeah. So thanks for the, John, for talking about the fall frolic. We had a workshop tonight and Tyler was great to sit in with us. We are assessing based on the, the bearing down of Hurricane Lee, whether we'll keep it on for this weekend. And so we're going to make that decision on Thursday. And once we make the final decision, then we'll blast it to all the Georgetown media outlets, whether we're still going to be on, knowing, of course, that we've got our fire department there to help us and a lot of community volunteers that are probably waiting to hear what the decision will be. And so we're working with Haley at the park and our other community members to make that decision. So please stay tuned and we want to make sure it's fun and not a washout. Thanks.
Okay. Who's that? Did you have something to say?
Yes.
Hi, okay. Couple of quick things, just for general information. According to CMP, the outage started yesterday morning at 6:45. And by my clock, it was over with by 9:01. And it was due to a tree on Araucic. Don't know the exact location, but.
Thanks.
That's the best information I got. You covered an awful lot of things tonight and a fair number of them will have an impact on the code enforcement officer. And I know that the code enforcement officer has been very responsive and works his tailbone off. But if we keep going in the trend that, that we're going, we may at some point in the near future have to reevaluate whether or not the code enforcement officer is a part-time job or a full-time job. That's just my opinion as the chair of the planning board and seeing what goes on with what he has to do.
Thank you, Bob. I think, I think that's a very important comment.
Thank you. And the last thing I have to say is, right now, the weather report, the latest weather, weather reports are very favorable in concerns with Hurricane Lee. But I caution everybody, and I hope we can get this word out, don't become overconfident. Our soils are very, very wet. It would not take a whole lot of wind, being as how the trees still have leaves on them, for trees to start blowing over. Be very cautious. If power does go out, people are going to be starting their generators. Everybody needs to be careful about carbon monoxide and storage of gasoline. And that's about it.
Hey, well, thank you. Anything else? Seeing none, I guess I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Favor.
Night, everybody.
Good night.